For all your insurance needs, home, auto, life, health, or commercial, contact Peggy J. King Insurance Incorporated at 205-921-1616. Or stop by the office located at 370 Bexar Avenue West in Hamilton, Alabama, right next to the Clyde Nick's Public Library. Peggy J. King Insurance, where everybody is somebody special.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beauty of it. We thank you for the blessing you give us each day and allow us how we enjoy it. We pray, Lord, that we come for no other reason than to seek what is best for the constituents of Marion County, Lord. We pray, Lord, that we might seek your knowledge in all that we do, that we might make the best decision concerning these Marion County. We thank you once again for this opportunity to serve. We pray for those, Lord, that are in so far and in the basic fields that serve us each day for our health and for our safety, Lord. Go with us now and forgive us where we fail and lead, bless us, none of them.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Now, a couple of people there, they appear amongst us.
There's an animal too.
You may look like you first, don't they?
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry about that.
Sir?
Sorry, thank you, sir. On the safety meeting, that you know where we are on that, November 29th, Marion County's going to be hosting a Jeller training program. There were six who left the state. Marion County's going to be hosting them while young Harold set it up for us, kind of help the other counties around also. A couple here in Marion County that have been driving off so far. Also, on December the 4th at 1:30, there's a safety meeting at the Two Way Shop. And I would really like if y'all could to send your hands to this meeting. One big meeting is going to be on meth labs, little small wet meth labs that they have, recognizing, finding them on the side of the road, what to look for, and just saying what to do. Just a short safety meeting. We need to get one in this year, please, for...
And that is what date, because it's opening long enough?
December 4th. December the 4th at 1:30. At the Two Way Shop.
At 1:30?
Yes, sir.
Two Way Shop, safety meeting.
Yes, sir. I'd really appreciate it if all y'all just could be there. I'll have you sign in sheets and we can record all that news here and maybe get everything in order for this year and start off the new year then.
In the right stead.
In the right stead to get our distance. So I appreciate that.
But the district employees come back too?
Yes, sir. It would also help them as they're working. It could help the drug passers and it'd also help them recognizing if they do say something. I thank y'all for that. I do have a question. The North Alamo Mutual Aid Association agreement, was that signed or do y'all know? I think I'll give it to Scott Hunt and I just wondering about something there.
Brooke, is that only a general, we signed that mutual aid?
We haven't spoken on it before and now we're going to let Scott Hunt review it. Scott turned it a little bit late using the meeting.
Okay, but we have not set forth plan, uh, signed it.
I appreciate it. Don't see you before, they see you something before.
Is there a deadline on this signing of this?
No, sir. There's not. And I kind of drugged my feet because also the municipalities are going to sign it and I've got with them since they've got some new mayors in office, got with them.
Yes, okay.
And so, we're trying to get it all done before the end of the year, but it doesn't have to be exactly.
Happy Thanksgiving to you, Jim.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Was Ms. Cooper going to come big this morning?
She's coming by anyway.
Or will?
Mr. Chairman, I'll jump back and approve the minutes, sir, and get that done.
That'd be good, Joe. All I'm saying is approve the minutes. They have a motion. They have a motion, you got a second? Approve the minutes.
I'll say it.
Word. All fair side.
Aha.
Opposed likewise. Approve the claims. They have a motion, we approve the claims.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll say it. Lady, all fair side. Opposed likewise.
Reckon he passed you, Bob, ain't no more commission. Part time.
It's part time. Something we got to work on.
All right. Let's go.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You know, we just, we just got here.
I'm coming asking for approval for new aerials for our county police phone, our mapping system. And I have a contract that needs to be signed if you guys are willing to look at it. I voted for part of it last year and I actually have a part presentation for this year. And as far as I know, we're covered for that, but I mean, if you guys...
How often we have to do that, tell me?
Well, we have had aerials since 2005 and most counties try to do that three to five years. We're seven years, you know, behind. And of course, we have a tomato pack that came before, you know, and now we're rebuilding and so...
Who's available to do things like that? Do we have any choices?
Well, I have a company with IAC that has closed the last time that we were, we had. Linda made no more. I mean, we did, I'm sure there are more aerial companies that do hard three, um, type of ones that have worked with before, that had done ours before.
Have you checked prices or mean to like a budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have.
How much was it?
It's $152,776 for the total, um, everything.
$152,000 for what?
Just for the complete package, just the aerials.
I'm worried about plane. Where's the company?
That huntsman.
You want that, you?
It's the way, it's the way y'all sell.
Yes, sir. And all the new buildings are there, you know, anything. And then it's, of course, you know, when they come in office, we can pull it up on the screen. And that is online too. It's open to people that they can pull up.
Yeah.
Of course, right there is that we have like map people looking at it, you know, they'll say, I have a capability, you know.
Did we ever, I know when this first began, we thought the possibility we could be able to, uh, sell some of this to other people that would, could use this photography. Was this ever, did there ever come any, they come about that?
That's when they did it in 2005, the state. Of course, we got grants and everything in the DOT paid for part of it, but, you know, I don't know about it now.
Did you ever look into any more with Franklin County?
I did look at that over there. That, I think, still isn't out there, I don't know.
Would it save us any?
It possibly could save on the, um, just the aerial, but I have the flying part, but we'll still have to cover the other, I'll have to get somebody to do the rest of the work for it, you know, um...
Where?
And I'm not sure. I don't, because I haven't even got prices, I don't know who knows for that.
This covers more than just the flying. This is also the camera work and aerial.
Yes, and I might probably add everything sent to a computer or something.
Where's the, the grants for this, that paper there? Do you get grants?
I don't think there's any more grants. That was just like a one-time thing.
Only had all the money, Brooke.
This comes out of the reappraisal fund. We budgeted for it last year and there was money left over at the end of the year to cover.
We have the money. Motion to approve.
They have a motion.
I'll say it.
Any questions or vote? All fair side. Opposed likewise.
They won't vote for it.
I'll be voting. What I see, you know, take the bag, just let it stand or use on the line, you know, but, okay? What I...
Okay, thank you.
I guess, see, if we...
Is this Shaw on the way?
Yes, it's next to me.
He's a 10 o'clock man.
Yes, yes.
We'll be here in 10 minutes.
And I know this is over, but I might go ahead and add this, that I have told Shaw, Mr. Mike Shaw, that anyway, any of these things that I have, that they can use at the issue's office, they're welcome to you, um, anyway that I can...
Well, what I was referring to, well, go over there, it was possible, you know, that Alabama Fire, people like this, that see if you use these aerials and would, well, we could charge for it.
Right. And we do sell, um, you know, individuals come in the office and want a copy of a map for certain, like companies that do, we sell these maps, you know, we put back in the, I bring money monthly over, but...
They're online, they can look at them online.
Free. At least charging.
Yeah, exactly. All right, well, thank y'all.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
I hadn't found that in county could charge before we figured anything out, and all this payout.
It seems like this, Dave. Uh, Mr. Ragin, well, Shaw, Kevin, you, you have a word or you just, uh, visiting?
I'm just here visiting.
I just want to get from, get from here with y'all meetings and something. Just here visiting. Thank you.
Does Mike, I'll cover these resolutions also on these highways. What about, uh, our lawyer, is he coming too?
Yes, he's just running late in the meeting right now.
Okay. Uh, we have an appointment on the reappoint, uh, replace Mr. Bowles, which I understand is unable to, uh, does not want to be reappointed. Uh, do we have, uh, is this a, uh, a district appointment or whose?
Yeah, it's my appointment.
Your appointment?
Motion to put Betty Quinn on the replacement of Shaw's back.
Okay.
Betty's a teacher at Hagerburg and has been for four to two years and she's interested in serving on, on the National Board and probably won't give a second, but I'm appointing, but that's my appointment, so I might, might put her on.
Okay, I will motion that we appoint, sir.
Ask a question. Does this go to districts? Who are you? Great junior, I guess. You got one on that thing. I'm not counting the form. I don't think nobody does.
Yeah, I got to see him.
Yeah. And then what's that, what's that?
Then I'll, I'll say, I don't go pay his money.
At Aiden and Kimber, there's three appointments.
How are these, so there are many appointments we have?
There are three appointments. Your current ones were Aiden and Kimber, Ray Cien, and Charles Bowles. Y'all reappointed Ray Cien and Aiden and Kimber last meeting. But there's only three appointments and y'all just...
And that was one through three then?
Yeah.
Over and by them.
Well, they don't go to meetings, no way. I don't want to make trouble. What did they done, we all don't need them back.
We got a motion to put, uh, lady's name was?
Betty Quinn.
Betty Quinn. I'll say it.
I'll say it. I don't know what I'm...
Is there any questions or comments? I'm currently, I oppose likewise. Okay, if we had, uh, the appointment to take our word. We have a proclamation here for the National Farm City Week of the 22nd, the 22nd week of the 22nd of November is to be proclaimed as Farm City Week. I don't think there's any of you three that's old proclamation here if it's available in order for that to read it. But it is to do...
He won't vote for it if he don't believe it.
It is to do with the, uh...
Oh, wait, step that?
Well, farm and city corporation that is supplying the food for the, for the world. We got a motion to approve this. Second?
I'll say it.
All fair side.
Right. What, what is it?
22nd, November 22nd. All opposed likewise, say aye. Let's prove, you know, so, uh, we think we should sign this. Okay, uh...
We need to approve the CDs at State Bank.
Uh, it says State Bank offers our best, best, uh, figures here, so...
1.5 for one year.
Yes.
I want that motion, boy.
I hear a motion, let it be a...
Second.
Second. All fair side.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. So we reduce that with State Bank. Give a pleasure, uh, hold a minute here before we request a executive session.
Our legislative conference on that fifth and sixth, so we, uh, I guess we already set up for that, eh? It's a, how many?
I'm sure.
Sir?
One minute, dang it.
But Shaw, we're, we're...
That's all I can do.
Sir, um, you want to know these projects first?
Good, that'd be good, yeah.
Of Agent 48, you don't get it. Of course, we talked about this, you know, we, y'all wear laser program and, of course, the potential ramp program as well. And, of course, we're looking to possibly getting a substantial amount of money. I thought it might not be a bad idea if we go ahead and got a, had a curve, a little bit initiated, some projects, get them in the mail, so to speak. I got a map here.
Thought I was adding that.
Bridges and roads.
Here's, here's what we've got. We've got, um, County Road 35, well, actually I've got these resolutions. We got resurfacing traffic strapping on County Road 35 from Lamar County Line norally to the Buddy Gage River Bridge, 2.827 miles.
2.8.
That's a man getting all bridges too.
Resurfacing and traffic strapping on County Road 11 from Marion County 35 northwest route to the intersection of Alamo Highway 17, 2.791 miles.
Is this potato?
Resurfacing and traffic strapping on County Road 29 from US Highway 43 norally to the intersection of Alamo Highway 87, 9.408 miles.
You said 27.
You are not going to hit that one.
Resurfacing and traffic strapping on County Road 48 from Alamo Highway 253 northeast street to the intersection of Alamo Highway 241, 4.5, 1.3 miles.
253.
Four point.
I mean, how long is that? We're done working on six years. No, this is different.
This is part, this is part, it don't work.
You wouldn't, you started off...
Is it just strapping from Alamo 250 northeast intersection to 41?
253.
Resurfacing and traffic strapping on County Road 24 from Alamo Highway 129 south east street to the intersection of Alamo Highway 233, 3.477 miles. Resurfacing and traffic strapping on County Road 45 from US Highway 43 northeast street to the intersection of Alamo Highway 253, 8.040 miles. Those are the proposed projects now. This, this did remind you, under, under round two of the rate, A-trip application, we submitted County Road 20, County Road, a portion of County Road 42, and County Road 85. Those were submitted under round two. So those were still being considered for funding. It's up, um, near Berry Creek, it's the Berry Creek, I think, area, on, on Rock. And remember, they had delayed the announcement for the eight, the round two A-trip projects because they came out with the ramp program, giving the counties the opportunity to take either the A-trip route or the ramp route, and y'all were somewhat familiar with that project. But, um, and we've got the three bridges that we, where we got the 1.8 million dollars to do the three bridges on County Road 33 and 13. And, and my thinking is, you know, obviously there's, we're probably not going to get all these projects, but these projects, depending on what direction y'all vote to go on between now and January the 9th, if we, if we decide to go to the A-trip route, we will be competing with other projects, so we've got several projects in there. And there's a process we've got to go through. It takes time to get the different, the different information, you know, we've got to get traffic counts and accident data. There's a lot of things that have to be done before we can even be considered for a project, so we want to just go ahead and start that process and hopefully get ahead of the game a little bit.
We already done that on 20 now.
20, 20 has been done. Um, 85 is, has been submitted and 40, that portion of 42 has been submitted. We're currently working on, on different phases of those projects, you know, categorical exclusions and things. I know a lot of that's technical stuff that doesn't mean a whole lot to y'all, but those, those three projects are under, under the process of getting ready to...
It means a lot to Eddie, goes all over his...
Right, right. You do a good job.
Well, I mean, we, you have to understand, there's one thing that, that it's a, a lot of people don't understand, there's only certain routes that are eligible. I mean, every road in this county is not eligible. It has to be a major collector, a higher...
Funny way to talk about it. How can you have a road that's got to go bridge on a major place?
Let me finish. Bridges are in a separate category. Bridges in a separate category and they have to be structurally deficient or functionally obsolete, have a sufficiency rating of less than 50, and then they're eligible to be replaced under the failed bridge program. So, so bridges are eligible and, and depending on what route y'all take, they may become more important if you decide to go to the ramp route, bridges become more of a factor in, in there, you know, so...
You got to make first power, yeah.
That's right, that's right. That's right, that's right.
You say this would probably be in our term, and we have been served, serving as our public, we'll never see another program.
Very significant program for counties, you know. We're very fortunate to have an opportunity to help people and do some projects that's been long overdue. I know a lot of y'all have been wanting to do these projects for a long time. We're not guaranteed to do them, but we're going to put our, our stuff in a position where we can compete for these funds.
Appreciate you getting us in a position, take advantage of it, if somebody is, is there.
And I might mention that actually, one of those projects, Mike, I've got them colored color, the one in pink is our regular federal aid program, because that actually 24th not eligible under A-trip, so we include that and 46 will be included under the normal federal aid funds. They're minor collectors, they're not eligible under A-trip, but they're eligible under a normal federal program up to a certain dollar amount.
So, could you give us an estimated amount of money it cost us for what we've submitted in one and two?
One, in one, we've got funded.
Reason to say it back is, uh, is A-trip versus round.
Okay, round one, we submitted three bridges on County Road 33 and 13. We were awarded about 1.7 million dollars.
For all three of them?
Yeah, for all three of them, in round one. Round two, we submitted three resurfacing projects. County Road 20 was about 1.7 million dollars. County Road 85 was about 1 million dollars. And County Road 42, I'm not real sure what it was, it's, it was around 1.5 million. So, so...
So you're talking that full meat?
That's right, that's right. That still leaves, that still leaves some money. And, and obviously all these won't be done, but what we've done, we've given everybody an opportunity to have projects to compete for this money.
So if we're looking at strictly the dollar and not the future, the ramp has been the best deal for us, but...
Well, I don't think so. I, I think...
Not for right now, but down the road, we ain't satisfied being a dog yet.
Yeah, well, you get three for two, I'd take any of that.
Yeah, but Don, what you, what you're not thinking about is these projects we've just submitted.
I'm not thinking about that, I'm saying we're, we're looking at right now versus on down the road, didn't have a good projects on down the road. I'm not leaning toward ramp or, or the other way either. I want to make the best decision we make for, for Marion County.
Exactly. We need, we need to talk to the cities and find out what, what their interests are. And y'all need, y'all need to make a decision based on all facts and all the information contained in it.
And, and the 10 million, 80, 20, uh, on down the road, we got to look at that because that means we'll have 80% of money.
We'll leverage our county dollars much further if we can...
We're only looking at both of them at the same time, though.
That's right, that's right. Kenny's right. You got to make a, you got to make a decision by this, by January the 9th.
I know, that's what we're saying, that we need to make the right decision on it.
That's right.
For Marion.
That's right. They're saying we...
I don't, that's what's worrying me, that is, down there.
But anyway, what I need y'all to do is, is not these resolutions, y'all sign them, and what we'll do, we'll continue to pursue these projects and continue to...
And then motion to re-sign these resolutions. You got a motion?
I'll say it.
We got a second? Any more to say? All fair side. Opposed, signed?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just wait, there's two copies, if y'all just sign it.
Okay, is there anything else besides your, your...
No, nothing other than, and I got y'all copy, let it y'all know.
I'm sure. Is it, but, here, here, here.
Exact same, only, only changed today.
We have, uh...
Yeah. For the record, that's no change.
Y'all, uh, upgraded, uh, in form of agreement with the county here, upgraded for, what, five more?
Five years from, from today.
Five more years from today. And it's same exactly as, as the last agreement we signed. Do I have a motion we signed?
Same time.
Same time. Same, exact same wording, changes today, no change in order.
Motion adopted.
Second? If we're all fair side, opposed likewise.
Mr. Allen, y'all welcome.
Thank y'all.
So you still have to move Don's law of the week?
Yeah, I did, Frank.
Can you remind me, while we're at low, the, remind me, I know by A-trip, but ramp, I'm trying to remember, remember what ramp is?
That, that's a program where the state actually pays the national, but it's, you know, lower level.
Okay.
And Ed, man, Kenny didn't name it a ramp program, that come out of Montgomery.
Actually, on the A contract, you don't have to sign a law, you're going to... I have time, I have time. Mr. Bob, Bob, one, Bob, one from lady, just talking.
What did he say?
Didn't that come out of Montgomery? I asked the highway director, how'd, how'd that thing come out? As a ramp program?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't...
That came out of Montgomery.
But it's, it's, it's something that's low level.
We're not, we're not guaranteed such money.
Yeah, so, okay.
Get, see what their. Yeah, I'm gonna sign forty-eight.
Not guarantee, guaranteeing, but they get, give a hundred percent to give it.
Under the ramp.
Been on the books too long, huh? Been a long time coming.
The legislature.
I remember playing that in my book, you're much in water. Don, wouldn't he bear to talk about three days, what, three days and three nights?
Yeah, he'd hit. He doesn't know what he has, though.
Well, they couldn't complete it.
Had it twice. We're going baby again? You saying terms really good. Now, what I didn't mean from that, you know, I couldn't understand one of his names, that program.
Yeah, probably.
And I couldn't understand it, but, you know, they don't even have to do this up here.
Oh, you're talking about the rent ministry, that, no, that.
No, no, they don't, yeah, the rent.
Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with that.
They don't have anything to do with it.
Probably with money, like, rolling, rolling annual something, you know, financial, but, you know.
Well, if you just write out what it means, though.
Yeah. No, not, I didn't, I didn't think that any good ministry, you know, no.
They catch you not knowing what it is.
It's an acronym, I, you know, I, it's, it's locked, I, it's left me for a moment, you know, um, I, I looked over, of course, we got an email, I, I can't.
Can we change your? I would look up.
Forget more now.
I asked the chairman if we can change our, we'll extend this contract.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Hunter, you ready to?
I don't know.
Yes, I think so. We need to go into executive session for a good name of character of an individual or.
Yes, sir.
How long?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes.
I'm gonna, sorry, just good name of character, name is virtual or.
Okay. General.
General motion.
I got a motion.
General reputation character.
Got a second, motion second, all fair side. About thirty minutes, I'll retreat.
So it's seen to you, huh?
Now, we're pretty close, so.
I gather the lead. I'm definitely, I'm definitely.
I'm gonna bat it, uh, one time about.
Have a motion, go back to the, uh.
I might get in the camp house, I can.
Uh, motion second, all fair side. There, uh, just I hear a motion with you.
You got that too. I'll make it.
Second.
I'll sign a second or make a second or a second.
That's not one of them?
All fair side. All opposed, say it likewise.
We're through, right?
That's right.
What was the contract?
The, the agreement, for that, North Alabama, what is it? Uh, reciprocal agreement with other. You said you had to catch your thought.
We made a motion, everything, to turn, right on.
Yeah. See all the ground? Yeah. Oh, okay.